Hey, and I'm gonna buy him a hibiscus.
Okay.
My name is Hank Baumann. I'm here to talk about the storage of kayaks on racks. I've sent you all a letter explaining my position, so I don't need to be redundant here. I would like to amend it slightly because I found out from Lisa Hannan that dock boxes are permitted on a dock, which now I'm really confused because a dock box is temporary storage, whereas kayaks on a rack, they're not. They are considered temporary storage and therefore not permitted. I think when the city allowed kayaks to go on docks, they didn't foresee how they would be stored, and so this was an omission in the regulations. When I found out that putting a kayak on a rack is not permitted, my neighbor and I looked up and down our canal, and we could see numerous kayaks on racks. I mentioned it to some people in the audience. They couldn't believe that there's a prohibition on doing that. I can't understand the government interest on prohibiting storing kayaks on a rack. And in fact, it's a way to protect your property. As I pointed out, when the docks flood, if they're just laying on the dock, more likely they're gonna float away, but if they're on a rack, you'll still have it when the flood subsides. So I would ask, as I pointed out, this is a very minor issue, but I would ask the council to grant an exemption so those of us that already have our kayaks on racks can continue to do this without having the sword of Damocles over our head and have a code violation. Thank you. Unless you have any questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Sherri Leonora, a Punta Gorda resident, and I'm here today to speak about the master plan revision. And I think that it's probably going to be one of the greatest gifts this council will ever give the city again. Revision is needed because Punta Gorda is at a pivotal position in its growth and development. So many good things are happening in the community. The block party last year was, last weekend was awesome. Thank you for that, and I know even better things are to come under the leadership of this council. So I did, when thinking about the revision of the master plan and the RFP that will initiate the action, I did a little research because I don't know a whole lot about this process, and specifically on developing a RFP. I looked at several cities, and the projects of one community, Culver City, California, had some questions that they posed that are, I thought, were particularly relevant to Punta Gorda, so I can't claim ownership of these questions, but I paraphrase them slightly. And these are the essential questions I think we need to answer. What is precious here that we don't want to lose? What is almost good that we need to change and make it right? What is terrible that needs to change? What is missing? What is happening nearby that we should take advantage of? And the CRA discussed that. What is happening nearby that we should be concerned about? And again, we know there's an elephant across the harbor. What is our goal, and how do we get started? So these are questions that I think that all of us would have slightly different answers to perhaps, but I think there'd be a great commonality between our answers. And I'm sure that this would be where we need to begin. There are a lot, might be a lot of different methodology, but I think we all want what's best for Punta Gorda. So I strongly believe that this revision and the way that RFP must be citizen-driven. And I think that it's very important that we identify stakeholders, we have outreach activities with specific plans to bring in people who are probably underrepresented, and we provide information-sharing strategies, we utilize creative and technical and professionals who are already residents of this community, we use online and social media, and we use creative methods for community involvement. So it's important to me that we don't have one group look at this plan, and then another group look at this plan, because it's through the dialogue between the citizens and the city and the business owners that can, ownership of this plan is going to be created. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Todd, and I do live in Punta Gorda. And I did attend a meeting that was held at the Civic Association just a few weeks ago. And I did offer up a glance at this particular document that I think it'd be, proves everyone to read online or get a hard copy. Having served on many commissions in a town that, beyond Punta Gorda, the Cape May, New Jersey, have served on the master plan committee there, and still am doing that at this moment, even through connection with the city on the internet, I, I offer these particular, I guess, analysis of this document for Punta Gorda. Clearly, the master plan of 2005 was a testimony and a blueprint for goal-setting and evaluation. And it was done by many people. Punta Gorda is thriving in so many ways due to the various stakeholders: government, employees, businesses, citizens from all the populations, volunteers, all of whom give our city stability and vision. At this juncture, we need to take the concept of inclusiveness to a higher level, with increased opportunities for all stakeholders to examine the past with new eyes, to increase the opportunities for ad hoc standing committees, using the ones we presently have, and perhaps even creating new ad hoc committees. Clearly, the city needs, in my estimation, an architectural review committee. I think that we need to examine a greater protection of the city's historic district. We need to seek national landmark status beyond the designation of National Register of Historic Places. We need a committee that reinforces water conservation. We are going to have a new RO plant that is precious water manufactured, that is precious water that's expensive, that is precious water that will need skid updates, and all of those cost money. And I think the citizens, and my, over the time?
Yeah, just wrap it up, please.
I will. I think that we need to look at the commercial district downtown and enclose them all. I think we need to advance sustainability for a green team. I think we need a green team. I think that all of our buildings should be LEED certified. I think we need to investigate how we can create Punta Gorda an intact meeting, not just one area at a time, but bring us together at a town meeting so we can talk to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wanda Winell. I'm a PGI resident, and I would like to address the bird cut-through, the land purchased for the bird cut-through in, at the end of PGI. I know the proposal made by the seller is the same that has always stood in the past and was, and was agreed on in the past two years. I know the further proposals this gentleman has made seem a little bit outlandish. I would hope that the committee and our city take a look at the people who would really appreciate, instead of butting heads, trying to come to an agreement with this gentleman and whether his lawyers, that there must be somehow, I don't know what else he plans to do with this land, but there must be somehow that we've gone this far, that we can work things out, whether it's with this proposal, which I doubt, or other recommendations that both people can have. Unfortunately, the Army Corps of Engineers has taken a long time to get back with us, and I think all of us should understand that certain government issues get in the way. So between me and many, many people in the area I'm in, we would appreciate it if you would just try to make things work, and I think if we try to do that, everybody will be happy. Thank you.
Nancy Johnson, Team Punta Gorda. As we enter into a discussion of the citizens' master plan, I'd like to remind folks that may not have been here in 2005 and '06 where it came from. The tradition of citizens' involvement in this community and working with government is extremely strong. After Charlie, a small group of people were concerned that government appropriately had their eye on public safety and infrastructure problems, and that somebody needed to start talking about the vision. So they raised about $200,000 in about eight weeks to hire a city planner with the city, not in isolation, to develop the citizens' master plan. Everybody who lived there then was involved in some way. We are pleased and proud that this is still a guiding document for the city. We're glad that you are reviewing it. New people live here now, and Team would just like to pledge their support. Whatever decisions you make about moving forward, we're there with you, and we will be proud and pleased once again to assist in any way we can.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' comments on regular agenda. Please make your way to the podium, please. Anybody else? If there's anybody else, if you could line up behind Mr. Kavanaugh, we would appreciate it so we can expedite the meeting. Anybody else?
Good morning, Mayor, Council members. Tom Kavanaugh, City of Punta Gorda. In reviewing the plan for the Harbor Walk, I noticed that there doesn't appear to be any plan for shade structures. I thought that that was included, and I hope that if it's not, it can still be, have a, some conversation about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're moving on now into budget, so we have two items under budget. The first is the award of the agreement to Raftellus.
That is the, went out for RFP. Raftellus was the lowest responsive bidder, and you have the impact fee recommendation. The attorney working with Raftellus, same attorney who worked with us for the previous fair share impact fee study, so we'd like to get started.
Sounds good to me. We need a motion?
We sure do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Marion Pace, procurement manager. Also, we need to have the appropriation of the funding.
It's on the...
Okay.
The, the, the funds, where it's coming from is on the agenda.
Okay, great. We're good?
We're good.
Okay. Okay, next we have discussion regarding the city's CAFER.
Oh, yeah, man. I had to take my coat off because it's so hot. This is stuff. This is good stuff.
You are such a short timer.
Twenty-five of these I've done. Look at this. Look at the geniuses that are coming in that assist me, keep, keep the department going and out of, keeping us out of trouble. Man, there's no way I'd have done...
You need a hat and a piece of straw coming out of your mouth.
A tenth of what we've done without these people that are coming in. It's just, I get so excited. Howard calls me up and says, "Are you excited?" "Oh, absolutely, I'm working on the CAFER." I had a banker call me and ask me where our CAFER was, because he wanted to look at when we were sending out the proposals for the loan, and I said, "It's all over my desk. Would you like me to send a picture to you?" We got it done, and took, Irma kind of threw a wrench into our whole operation. I love this place. I sent out a note saying this is my little piece of heaven. I'm gonna miss, I'm not gonna miss the job, I'm gonna miss my friends. And so I'm going up to Wisconsin, I'm gonna drive in the left lane at 60 miles an hour, I'm gonna put my right blinker on, and I think I'll do it all the way up, not just even when I get to Wisconsin, but just do it all the way up, and we'll see how, how many traffic, how much traffic I can get behind me, but I'm gonna be a snowbird, I'm gonna miss a lot, a lot of good people, and we've done a lot in 25 years, and I know this city will go on. It started in 1887, and it will continue, but these are the people that I've worked with, kept everyone out of trouble financially, thankfully. We had no bankruptcies or threats of, and I'm looking forward to moving on. I got, got something I gotta do. Been working 50 years, and I think it's time to just move on and maybe bother someone else. I am here, there's nothing exciting in the, in the CAFER. I think, I don't know if Jeff made it or not, Jeff Brown was gonna come from the auditors. If you have any questions, you can let me know or Jeff know. There was no management letter comments, there were no changes or no unqualified opinion, or it's an unqualified opinion, there's no quality, qualified. There's, just been an okay year, and now we're gonna have to just get through the Irma deal and get through the seawall, so that's the hugest thing. The state, I was shocked that I actually had an email from the state finally, saying, "We're getting ready to get in touch with you and to start moving along," so that was a positive. That was the first time, we'd been sending them emails, and they finally told us to stop, and so we did, and then they finally, they came around, and now they sent us an email saying, "Okay, we're getting ready to ramp it up," so it looks...
Maybe they heard you were leaving.
Yeah. I actually know some of them from Charlie, that's how long I've been here, and I recognize some of the people from Charlie, so, actually, I worked with Craig Fugate back when he was working for the state. He wasn't even the state, he was a deputy something or other, and of course Craig went up to run FEMA for a number of years, so. Any questions about the CAFER?
Before you, before you formally approve, accepting the CAFER, I do have something to give.
Uh-oh.
Our finance director. So we need to do that first.
We're not approving the outfit, just the CAFER.
I kind of like it, actually.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the CAFER.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CAFER. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
All right, thank you.
So I know, we, we've talked about our finance director for, for many years now. You know, those of us who have a finance background, numbers and budgets and all this stuff, I mean, I know that the finance folks don't get a lot of allocates out there, they just keep the financial stability of the city going, and that is, that's like a core level of service. And Dave has done a great job leading that core level of service for, I don't know how many years now. How many?
Twenty-five. I've been finance director about 20, but 25 I was...
Five years. So there are some things some of you may not know about him, but we're going, we are going to...
That's not good.
We are going to reveal that now. This is your going-away gift that we are, are giving you. We are giving, getting rid of this with great pain, because we don't know who's gonna take it over after you leave, so would you please come up here and accept this plaque in your honor?
There's a little bit of story on here. I tended to get it more often than anyone else in a, in a department meeting. In fact, in total, I got more often. I set a record, I actually got this signed before the meeting started. Somebody said something violent before we started staff meeting, and I went on a tirade, and so I got it before the meeting started, and I set a record, I don't think anyone's broken since, so. This is my grumpy sign, it's my legacy. Hopefully Kristen will not be winning it as often as I can.
She will not. No, she won't.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
By the way, we don't have any dress code law, but there is a public nuisance.
Does anybody else want to say? I would start a roast, but we have a long meeting ahead, so we'll save that for when we're having our lunch, lunch outside, off, off-the-record roast. Okay, next on to unfinished business, the first of which is Harbor Walk at Gilchrist Park, Area 2A and 2B conceptual plan review. Unless we, does anybody want a break?
Um, maybe we should.
Five minutes? Okay. Because I was gonna get up and leave. So 10:25, we'll be back with that.
Okay.
It's only two minutes.
It's 10:20. That's wrong. That's a government issue.
Oh.
Break's over.
Sure.
How about an adult beverage?
Okay, we are back in session, and we are moving into unfinished business. Harbor Walk at Gilchrist Park, Area 2A and 2B conceptual plan review.
For the record, Mitchell Austin Urban Design, I never thought I would be upstaged by the CAFER. So the, the presentation that you'll see today, we're looking, reviewing quickly the, the phasing plan for all of Gilchrist Park, Harbor Walk West. We'll review the base concept plan that has been provided by Wyler Engineering, including a summary of the parking, existing and proposed, and initial cost estimates. There will also be a discussion of plan options, which City Council requested. So Gilchrist Park, Harbor Walk, extends from the PG waterfront hotel to Fisherman's Village. The project is conceived of in three areas, Area 1, 2, and 3. Area 1 was completed with federal funds. The seawall was constructed prior, in the prior year to that with local funds for Area 2. And then Area 3 is, is the, the western three, the smaller parks, Alice Pittman and Shreve. So we will be discussing the Area 2, which is designated for construction with local funds in fiscal year 1819. So the base concept plan is illustrated here, so on the, the, excuse me, on the, the left side of, or right side of the screen is the edge of Area 1, on the right side of the, our left side of the screen would be the Bayfront Center. So those are the, more or less, the extents, so the streets would be Gil to Berry. Zooming in a little bit on the eastern portion of this proposal, basically what we have is Harbor Walk extending in a 20-foot wide configuration along the, the seawall. We have a little bend there so that we can save a tree and provide good ADA compliant access to the fishing pier. Into, in the main body of the park, there are very little changes, just some walkways, et cetera. The existing pickleball and tennis court locations remain unchanged. There is an area, a bubble, designated for a future informal or formal garden space. There's no pro, there's no design in this project, in this engineering project, there's no design or construction anticipated in that location, it's just a placeholder for where we think that could go if, in some point in the future, in some future project. And then along Red Esplanade, you will see street scape improvements, intersection treatments, and on-street parking. There will, of course, be stormwater management entailed in this project to accommodate the additional parking. Whoops, went the wrong way. Moving further west, we get into the most active portion of the park with the, the playground and the basketball courts, and then the Bayfront Center, and of course, the boat club, which is a leasehold property, is outside of the project area, but in this vicinity. The street scape improvements are intended to carry along with, again, the on-street parking and the, the intersection treatments. The main, the main add in this location is off-street parking, formalizing and connecting the off-street parking lots, which would extend from Chastain Street to the Berry Street right-of-way, and associated stormwater management improvements. So because parking is such an issue at Gilchrist Park, we went, we had the consultant go through and, and give us a, a good summary of the existing formal parking that is in the park, as well as what their proposal would be to get us some, some good counts on that. Displayed here is the, is the parking as it exists in the park today, and this is the formalized parking spaces. So there are 121 total spaces. Of those 121, 34 exist in Area 1, so there would be 87 spaces in this area to the proposed So the, the Area 2 base concept plan proposes a total of 212 parking spaces, 15 of those being 88 accessible spaces. This is an increase of over 120, of 125 spaces, and would, upon completion of Area 2, assuming the base plan was constructed, 246 total parking spaces for Gilchrist Park. To put 246 parking spaces into some perspective, the parking garage at Herald Court Center is approximately 400 spaces. The parking lot at City Hall Complex here is about 125, so it's a substantial amount of parking. It's roughly equivalent, it's, I believe, at Lashley Park, we're at 270 going, we're increasing that with the, with the additional project. So at a one-to-one comparison, walking through Area, Area 2 proposal, we look at the existing conditions up on the slide on the left, and then the proposed base concept plan on the right. In the first area, from Gil Street to McGregor, we currently have 25 existing spaces in the, the Gil Street parking lot. The base concept plan would provide 14 spaces of on-street parking in that area. So that's the only place where we see a reduction in the parking, and it's the area immediately adjacent to the tennis courts. The next section, looking from McGregor Street to Chastain, we currently have nine spaces in the McGregor Street parking lot. The base concept plan is to provide 27 on-street parking spaces in that location. And again, the existing condition, moving into the, the furthest west portion of the park by the Bayfront Center, we currently have 53 formal parking spaces. The base concept plan anticipates 139 in a combination of on-street and off-street parking. Base concept plan, initial cost estimate is approximately $3.2 million. Of that, approximately $2.5 million is, is the direct costs of the project. There's mobilization, and the engineer included contingent, a substantial contingency into the cost estimate, because this is based on a conceptual design, so this is not an engineer's cost estimate for the project. This is a, this is a takeoff of the concept design. So to put that number, which is quite large, into perspective, the cost of Harbor Walk Area 1 was approximately $1.6 million. The extent of Harbor Walk is 615 feet, and it's approximately 4 and 1/2 acre, and there are only 34 parking spaces included in that project that were to be constructed. The initial cost estimate is 1 point time, 1.9 times more than that, that cost for Area 1, but the Harbor Walk is 2 and 1/2 times larger at 1,500 linear feet. The park area is almost 2 and 1/2 times larger at 10.95 acres, and we're providing over five times as much parking with 178 spaces. So the, while the number is large, the cost-effectiveness of, of this proposal is actually quite good considering how much park area we will be rehabilitating, improving, and additional parking provided. additional parking provided. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Mitchell on that part?
No, not so far.
Okay. So, here, we'll summarize the, the plan options, and given the number of options, maybe we want to have a separate vote after each option-
Sure.
-to decide whether we want to take A, B, or C. Okay. So, we're looking at, at the Pont St. Leon statue, rehabilitation of the basketball courts, lighting for the pickleball and tennis courts, the parking lot at Gil Street, and the parking lot at McGregor Street. So, the first and easiest one is the, the access to the Pont St. Leon statue. Currently, the access to the statue area is provided from the rear of the statue, from the existing pathway. The base plan proposal intends to move the access to the, the pont statue to a walkway that connects from the street and from Harbor Walk, but you approach the statue from the front. So, the option would be to add back in a, a connection from Harbor Walk directly to the rear of the statue, which is the shortest distance between the Harbor Walk and the statue, but it's not maybe the, the best for the viewing of the statue. So, this option is approximately five thousand dollars in additional cost, which seems like a whole lot, but there's a, an elevation change that needs to be made because the statue is up on a hill. So, the actual, the entire length, extent of Harbor Walk needs to be elevated as we go to the east and west of the statue so that we can get to a point where we can make an accessible route to the, to the statue area.
And we would just do this to add another access point to get to the statue?
Yes.
Do we need that? I mean, I mean, if it's-
It's-
It's a slope issue, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so-
ADA.
Yeah. It's an ADA issue, ADA compliance issue.
I mean, I think for that reason, it's good. I mean, we're all getting older, if that's going to help people get there.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
Are shade options going to be, if we add the option of shade structures, is that going to be an expensive proposition in your estimate?
In the initial proposal that, that council approved, shade options were not discussed. So, the engineer has not provided, nor has staff considered, potential locations for shade-
The answer is yes. We know that there are shade structures that we are going to come back to you after we can get the base projects completed. This is sales tax money.
Okay.
And we need to make sure we have sufficient sales tax money to at least get the base project completed.
Completed.
We know, like the pergolas. We know we had a presentation of that. We know we need to come back to you after this is done so we can give you the costs associated with those shade structures and whether we have the sales tax dollars available at that time, because we still have some other projects to complete.
Okay.
So, the answer is yes. There is a, a good dollar cost associated with pergolas.
Okay. Besides Jaha, does anybody else have a strong feeling about adding this other access to the statue?
Well, it's not strong, but I, I think it's-
I originally didn't think it was any big deal, but now that we talk about it's raising the whole Harbor Walk and it's raising-
Or it's ADA.
If it's an ADA issue, I, I'd go along with it.
Well, the front side would still be ADA accessible. It would just-
Correct.
-be providing an additional ADA access point.
So, the front side actually faces south. I can't, it's been a while since I've looked at it.
Yes, the Pont St. Leon statue is, is set up so that it, he appears to be arriving on the shores of Florida.
Let's skip over this one and then we'll come back.
No worries.
Was that why we changed the orientation of the sidewalk, then? For that purpose?
Yes, yes. So, so that we approach the Pont St. Leon statue from the front.
Yeah. We have the one access point. I'm okay with that.
That's the front of him.
Right.
The front of the statue is facing south, then you want to see it from, I don't know why we need two access points, then.
We don't? No. Okay, we don't.
So, consensus to eliminate that option. Good.
Made a decision.
As long as we have a way to get to the statue.
Yes, to the front side of it, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We need two necessarily.
Wait, is there, is there some kind of signage on the other side that we're going to have to move? Isn't there some signage there?
There is, there is a piece of, of signage there, an interpretive panel that talks about Pont St. Leon, and I'm sure we can work with the conquistadors to get that relocated.
Okay.
So, the second option that we're to discuss is the rehabilitation of the existing basketball courts. We worked with the, with the design engineer to try and figure out how to make, increase the level of service of the existing courts. The way it's set up now, you have basically one regulation court that runs more or less north-south from the neighborhood to the, to the harbor, and then you have nets that are set up on the, the east and west side of the courts. So, basically, you get a, only one usable court or, or two usable half courts. So, we looked at different basketball types, and we can actually get, without changing the footprint of the basketball court as it currently exists. We could resurface it, put in new goals and posts, and end up with two recreational-sized courts. So, you'd have a full-size key and, and a three-point line that would be more or less in line with, with high school basketball standards, but the, the actual court length is, is a little bit less. So, it's a recreational-sized court. And the proposed cost for that-
Talked about refurbishing that for a long time.
Yeah, I've talked about that.
It gets used a lot.
Yes.
It really does.
Yes.
No, and we've talked for years about how it's fallen into disrepair, so.
That's a yes.
Yes, that's a definite.
Excellent. The, the third piece that we want to talk about is the, the court lighting. In the initial discussion, we definitely, there wasn't an agreement that the court lighting needed to be looked at and, and updated, since we're updating the rest of the park. So, we looked at LED fixtures, which would save energy and, and have good light quality for, for play. They would be full cutoff fixtures to hopefully reduce some of the off-site glare and, and light spillage. The cost for that was actually quite high. We're looking at a ballpark of around a hundred thousand dollars to relight those two courts. So, we thought it was important, given the, the overall project cost, to anticipate not doing this project. If we wanted to look at maybe removing the lighting and changing the parameters by which the, the courts were usable to, to a dawn-to-dusk scenario, which is not far off from what their current utilization is. The lights aren't kept on for very long in the evenings.
What time do they cut off? Do we know?
I believe it's in eight PM.
Eight PM.
Yes.
Right now, the lights shine into people's houses.
I know, and I would be worried about this situation, about the glare and the spillage. Gary?
On the, on the assumption, because I believe that when Nancy gets her claws on this, something that's going to happen, so when Pickleplex happens, there's going to be a lot of place to play pickleball, and I'm not sure that we need to extend, considering some of the other issues with some of the locals in that particular number, neighborhood, the, that playtime. So, I kind of, I'm kind of thinking that this is something that we should save some money on.
Yeah, I, I'm with you on that.
I'd rather see the money go into parking in that park.
Right. And we do, I mean, ponts is dawn-to-dusk, and it's, I mean, occasionally, we have an issue, but I think that's, you know, it's a good rule.
I would agree. We have lighting there right now, and the only time I think that it's important is during, in the winter, when the sun does go down and people want to play after work kind of thing. So, it's really not late, whether it's tennis or pickleball at this time. So, I think just table this one for now, is, I would agree.
And I think too, what Gary said, you know, you have South County Park. If, you know, if you, you need the nighttime experience, then you have, you can go to South County, and that's pretty accessible for most people. So, I would say, yeah.
Yes, meaning?
No. Yes, meaning no.
We, we eliminate lighting as the consensus.
I think this is a good hundred thousand dollars to save.
Okay. Okay. So, the next area that we want to discuss is the Gil Street parking lot. So, the base plan, it eliminates the existing parking lot. It involves, entails the relocation of the, of the vendor area and relocation of existing electrical panels. So, there are some substantial costs associated with the base plan.
Is the electrical panel for the vendor?
Yeah, there, there, well, there are two, well, there's a portion of the electrical panel that exists for the, to service the vendor area. That's, was designed into the original Area One project. So, it would be the location, really, of an electrical panel specifically for the vendor area.
Okay.
So, the, the, the engineer gave us two options on the Gil Street parking lot. While it looks like we could just retain the existing parking lot as it exists today, it actually doesn't meet the current, our, design standards that the city has for a parking lot. It is too narrow. The spaces are too short. They're only about sixteen feet long, and the drive aisle is only about twelve feet wide. So, it doesn't meet the current standards. So, in order to retain the parking lot, we have to actually add more concrete to make the parking lot work. So, the engineer gave us two options, and that was to reconfigure it in a way, this is option B, where we just have one single-loaded aisle of parking, and then option B, which has two aisles of parking. I'll go through those in a little bit more detail in this slide. So, on the top, the base plan, the cost of the parking, the tree loss, and the vendor area, all included in that. Option B, or, excuse me, option A, is a thirty thousand dollar additional cost. We would have the double-loaded aisle of parking with eighteen additional spaces. We would lose approximately eight mature trees, and we would have, the vendor area would, would remain off-street, so we wouldn't have the, the relocation or new electrical panel. Option B is just providing the single-loaded aisle. It would gain ten spaces over the base plan. We would lose six additional trees, and the, again, the vendor would be off-street, but that was twenty-eight thousand dollars. If I may, provide my professional opinion, option A here is, is really-
Cost-effective.
Very cost-effective. Eighteen parking spaces at thirty thousand dollars, at sixteen hundred dollars a space. If I was a developer, I would buy that all day long.
Mitchell? One problem I see with both options is I don't see how you enter the grass for additional parking.
Smarty pants.
There, there would be no, no entrance for the-
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to be clear. I couldn't resist. I apologize.
Yes.
I definitely think that the vendor area coming off the street is a way better idea than it being directly on the street. So, I'm okay with A or B. But A would, you know, again, give us a little bit more, especially for events and peak-time use and the things that we've heard. I would, I would be okay with option A because it's the closest to keeping what we already have there.
I agree.
Lynn had her hand up, and then I'll go to you.
Yeah, I definitely agree with option A. I think that solves a problem of having parking in the center of the park, which is close to the gazebo area. We don't currently have enough there, and I think that would solve some of our other problems we've had going on about this park. So, I, I would absolutely support option A on this.
I'll offer option C. I would like to see option A, but move it up and keep the base plan parking along Red Esplanade. So, we retain one, two, three, four spaces there, as well as all of option A, because we don't have enough parking along the east. And this, this puts optimum parking closer to the east side.
Good idea.
You know you lose more green space.
I realize that. I realize that. But we're not providing-
So, you're-
I mean, I, I think, you know, parking like what we, we, you talk about lose green space. The whole west part of the park is almost concrete-
Yeah.
-or pavement. I mean, so, I would, that kind of concerns me, that it's so intensive. But I think this would give us-
How much, how much further in would we need to go if we did that?
I would have to consult with the engineer, but my eyeball guess would be an additional twenty feet.
So, you're, you're saying, take this bottom photo here and add in the second, move it up and add in the second row and keep that on-street parking? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we can, if we can take option A and take the parking from option A and move it up onto what we see on, on the base plan- so that it keeps the on-street parking-
And the two rows.
And the two rows.
Okay. So, it's definitely going to affect the stormwater, which we have to-
It will affect the stormwater and immediately north. So, immediately in the location where the, the parking would be, there's a bermed area with several mature oak trees on it. So, we're looking to save as much of that bermed area with those oak trees as possible. So, that's why the option A doesn't take advantage of the on-street parking, because we were cutting into that area. We can certainly evaluate it and see how much-
Please evaluate.
-how much additional cost would be associated with it and how much additional tree loss or, or other impacts.
I mean, a minimal, I would, I would agree with option A. I'd at least like to see what, if it's possible, to do the other one without trying to take, you know, cut into that bermed area like you suggested.
Those trees are very, very nice, mature oaks, and we're trying to keep that look as best as we can.
Absolutely, and I understand from a master gardener perspective, we really don't want to get too close to those trees and interfere with the root structure, because that, once you start to, to do that, then you're starting to, could cause problems with the overall health of those trees. We don't want to lose them.
Yes.
If we kept what we have now, we would just be existing non-conforming, or do we really need to change it?
We really need to change it because there, there are ADA accessibility issues with the existing parking lot, the way that it's configured, and there, there's the potentiality of, of a fender bender occurring and, and somebody saying, "City, you, you left this portion of the park unimproved. You redid everything else." So, there's some potential liability issues there.
Okay. Gary?
I think that Nancy has a good idea. I would just ask a question Howard kind of alluded to, though. I would want to ask the question before we would go that route on what is the accessibility, the aesthetic and usability of that particular piece of property that we would have to give up? If it's going to mean that we're going to get rid of some hundred-year oaks or something like that, then I don't, I don't think we probably want to go that. But otherwise, to me, at, for the, for the, the additional space it takes and the two hundred and twenty dollars space for those extra eight spaces, that option A is probably the most cost-effective way that we can go, particularly with its accessibility to the, to the gazebo area.
So, if you can bring back C and maybe overlay it into the actual park right now, I know Google Earth is still not updated to the new park, but somehow, you know, take an aerial and show us what that would look like.
You want us to come back with that? Yeah, I think it's worth looking at.
Just look at, I mean, if it's going to, if it's going to be a problem with the oaks, then definitely I would not want to do that, because it's, we all know how much, how, we all value, the residents value, the, the tree canopy.
Right.
Is it possible to also get a rendering of what the park looks like now and compare it? I'm just, for the sake of comparison's sake, a rendering or even a Google Earth picture that, that gives you specific parking areas up, you know, that we can take a look at. It gives you a visual perspective of it.
Yes, I, I, we can certainly bring that back when we bring back option C, the additional information.
What is our timeline on this project?
It is completely escapes me.
Plan to have the design complete by probably October, November.
Correct.
Have that reviewed, approved, and bid it out January?
Yes.
As long as we don't keep changing our mind.
Correct.
Yes.
Our goal is to bid it out in January.
Right. So, are we scrapping A, or do you want to bring back A, too? Just B and C?
I think-
Everybody?
No, I think we have to, we have to see.
A and C. A and C. A and C. Sorry, A and C. Yeah, A and C.
A and C.
Yep. So B is out.
Yes.
B is out. That was a decision.
We can call it A-plus.
A-plus.
We'll call it A-plus, yes. I think it's a.
Okay. So the next option to consider is the McGregor Street parking lot. So the base plan proposes to eliminate it, so we enhance the view shed down McGregor Street towards the water. And then the option, and then the option is to retain that parking lot. And again, this existing parking lot is existing non-conforming, so there are costs associated with retaining the lot, unfortunately. The option of retaining the lot and providing a parking lot there at McGregor Street nets us a grand total of one parking space. We lose four existing mature trees, and it costs $20,000.
I know we wanted to keep that, but it's so small.
Yeah.
It really is small. Anybody have strong feelings about?
I think because that's where the pickleball courts are, I think we need to keep it unfortunately. You know, I hate to make the entire park a parking lot, but fact is that people will park on the grass if we don't keep the parking.
Well, they're not going to be able to get to the grass.
They're not going to be able to get on the grass.
My Jeep, my Jeep could have, but.
That's a way to make friends.
Oh, they can park on the grass.
Well.
There's plenty of parking near the pickleball.
And I think that on-street parking is going to be, I mean, we're really only gaining one, one space, right?
One, one parking spot at a cost of $20,000 additional dollars. To put the $20,000 cost into perspective, the rule of thumb cost for a parking space in a parking garage is $25,000. In a parking lot, anything less than $5,000 is golden. You build those.
Okay.
Yes.
The thing that's not reflected here is the fact that you pointed out earlier, Mitchell, is we've added all of the parking along Reta. And so when you look at all of that parking that's added, we really are adding a whole lot. So it's, while I agree with you that, you know, adding, keeping that, it just seems like $20,000 to gain one space when we're really adding a lot along Reta.
I agree.
And if we think about it, we're going to cut down trees, but then we're going to build shade structures. Like what, to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, you're right. Right.
Gary?
I'm just concurring. I'm just saying is, there's, first of all, we're literally doubling the parking capability for all practical purposes. There's still going to be a lot of parking available for the pickleball that's also associated with the basketball courts and the playground. And then you have even more around, on the street on Reta Esplanade. So to me, it's just a no-brainer that we should, we don't want to.
And really with this, look, we're giving back green space, which is another good thing because we just, with A and C, we're taking some away, so, and it's, that's fairly close. I mean, those courts are close to each, they're not that far apart that it's going to be that inconvenient for people that are there to participate.
They're going to expend a lot more energy playing their game.
Yeah, if the pickleball people can't walk from the playground and the bayfront to play pickleball, we got big problems.
Are we going to leave all of these amenities open and available for people while this part of the park is being done?
Not part of the time, I would think. It's going to be an active construction zone along Reta. I don't even see how they would be able to get through there.
We'll have to, when, when we get the bids back and we sit down with the contractor, we'll have to figure out how, how can we phase this in, and we'll have to place, you know, we'll have to do what we can do. I don't, in other words, we don't know.
I mean, we're looking at season again next year at this point. So people are going to be very upset if they can't use the playground while their grandchildren are here for season. Just saying. It's just a big deal.
Well, I think that that brings up the whole idea of phasing, so that it's, somehow there's access.
That will be a concern and a problem for the people that live here.
I agree with that. I think the playground is the biggest priority.
You saw the pictures I forwarded the other day. I mean.
By magnitude.
Oh, every time I've been by there too. Okay, let's, let's get down there and then we can.
Yeah.
So is the answer stay with the base concept and forget about the option?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that was all we had for the options. Were there any other portions of the park that we needed to discuss?
Let's just go look at the other down by the bayfront.
Oh, the parking area, bayfront center. Okay. So again, the, the direction given to city staff was to maximize parking in the park, and this location provided the optimal conditions to do so because it was the most intense portion of the park with recreational amenities and of course, the bayfront boat club buildings. So.
What is the tree loss here? Is it like in front of the bayfront?
In front of the bayfront center, there's, there's a couple of existing Canary Island date palms and a couple of other palms that would be lost as part of this proposal. The parking area, in terms of the landscape planning, we would landscape the parking lot as we require parking lots to be landscaped in the city code. So there would be the addition of many trees to this location.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I like this. I thank you for redesigning all of this part because it really makes a big difference in how it's going to be utilized.
Certainly.
Well, it certainly helps the boat club and the bayfront when they have events and they have people going. I mean, they'll have plenty of, and it also helps for a future activity center, whatever we may decide to do.
And it definitely helps the, you know, playground area. We all realize they're everywhere right now and helps to bring more order to the park. So yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I like this part.
There will be times that some of the amenities will have to close though, so let's get that out there now. Let's try. I mean, we're talking, what'd you say, October? So yeah, we're talking.
No, I said we would.
Bid.
Bid in January.
Okay, okay, so.
So, so really, if we bid in January, bidding is at least 30 days. You get the bids back.
Contract.
You have to get the contract and insurance and mobilization. We may be out of season.
We're close.
Close.
It would really be good if we could do that.
But it's probably going to take a year. I mean, it's going to take a good bit of.
We'll work with the contractor on phasing.
Gary?
I just, I'd be just an observational, the way I look at this, in particular if we're going to be phasing it in, I think the good news is there will at least be some indirect access to the playground that could be, that can be made capable as we're doing this in a phase so that there's, you know, they may have to walk from the existing parking lot of the bayfront center, maybe during one portion or something like that. But it seems to me that we should be able to keep the playground itself open during the, during the whole process.
I would like to throw one other thing out. Since we had such an issue with the contractor we used for phase one, I would like to just opine that sometimes you get what you pay for. You don't necessarily need to take the lowest bid contractor, as we had to do with the FDOT grant. And maybe we need to put terms in the contract where the contractor has timelines that must be met as the project is completed to make sure that they stay on, on target for the construction, construction dates. And, you know, we had an unfortunate situation last time where we ended up having to spend a lot of extra money because we had to have a supervisor on site and provide all the benefits for that employee that went with that job. So I'm just hoping that we don't have that problem happen again. And it would, sometimes we, taking the lowest bidder is maybe not the best option in some cases. I think we need to really weigh that contract a little bit differently.
Point well taken.
Point well taken. I think the good news is when the contract has been left to the city, the city has a very good track record of managing that. I, I agree with you. I think that we've had pretty good, pretty good luck when it's been strictly on our, on our shoulder.
The key on this phase two is this is not federalized. There's no federal money.
Right, right.
We manage it ourselves.
Right.
We have a much better track record.
And that, and that alone.
Saves money.
Yeah, and opens up the job to more people because they don't have to jump through all of the federal hoops.
I'm sure that the evaluation selection committee will.